We'll call the meeting to order. Can we do a roll call?
Jefferson.
Here.
Nielsen.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Pascoe and Delahoyd are absent.
Right.
Let's take this to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We acknowledge the Open Meetings Act posted on the south entrance behind everyone there, as you can see. Next up is 1D Adoption of Agenda. Do I have a motion for the adoption?
I'm motion. So motion.
I second.
Anything else?
We'll see.
I'm going to talk on the speaker while you're at it.
Approval of Consent Agenda.
I'm motion. Approve it.
I second.
Motion carries three to zero.
Proclamations and presentations, there are none tonight. Public hearings, is there anyone here to speak on a topic that is not part of the agenda?
That would be the next one that says probably comment. Public hearing, we don't have any tonight.
Public hearing, we don't have any tonight. Okay. Cheers, party.
Jason Quaid. Counsel, Stephanie.
I have any.
So unless you have anything for me, weather's getting warmer and we're patrolling the parks a little bit more and there's been lots of nice compliance with a lot of registrations on golf carts and I guess a nice note to mention is social media relocated or reunited a Basset Hound looking dog here in Waverly. I found out maybe it got a lot of public attention. So that was a great thing for the community. So I'll check and see if that dog was licensed and had its vaccinations or not, and then we'll go from there. Do they have any questions?
Thanks, Jason.
You bet.
All right, public comments. Is there anyone here in the public that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
You guys will sign this. Did you want to speak?
This is...
Well, this is...
They may be on agenda.
Okay. Brendan Cole, 12200 North 148. I'm here to voice my concerns and complain about 148 just past Waverly Road. I'm here to continue to bring attention to the problem, help find viable solution, to gain support for our cause, to bring back the right of a healthy environment and peaceful enjoyment of our property. 148 is an extreme health issue. Lime dust from the road is what I'm referring to. Extended exposure to lime dust causes respiratory issues, cancer, and eventually death. Safety issue, it's so dusty, you cannot see 10 feet at times. We can see the photo here. With the high speeds of traffic...
Brendan, your screen went off so they can't actually...
Sorry. I think you're going to want to see it. I pass it around a little time. It's an extreme health issue, lime dust, what I'm talking about. Safety issue, it's so dusty at times, you can't see 10 feet at a time. With high speeds, someone's eventually going to get seriously hurt. Currently, city staff, business employees, customers, farmers, Waverly residents, construction workers, me and my family all use and are exposed to this road. It's not a matter of if, but when. It's just a matter of time before somebody gets hurt. What's the problem? Excessive traffic. Heavy truck traffic and vehicles create excessive dust. Lime dust is what I'm talking about. The EPA calls it fugitive dust. There are laws and regulations pertaining to this. I'll have more about that at a later date. Lime dust causes many health issues for humans, livestock, pets, vegetation, crops, water pollution, and air pollution as it drifts. This should be a concern not only for our family, but city staff, residents of Waverly, employees. 148 is within the city limits and is under the city authority. Currently, this road gets 300-plus cars a day, trucks and equipment. I stopped counting at 300. It's probably way above that. All this traffic funnels to 148th and Highway 6. You already are familiar with that intersection problem. These trucks that are traveling this road are damaging the road at 148. The county has applied rock three times in the last two months due to road degradation and graded almost every week from heavy truck and vehicle traffic. These trucks and traffic have damaged the road at the culvert. City employees applied multiple truckloads of asphalt milling to bring the road height back up to the culvert to help prevent damage. Okay, so we know the problems. What is the solution? I propose we close and block 148th Road just past our property. We live at 148th Williams Road. It's on the way out to the treatment plant. Some build a small access road to the treatment plant for city access through the cornfield. Currently, the city owns this property. Redirect all traffic to 162nd by diverting these trucks and traffic from industrial and commercial development to the north. It will take traffic and trucks away from the residential development along 148 and take it to the outside of the city. There'd be less noise, pollution, damage to the roads, safer and provide a better quality of life for the residents. By moving trucks, the traffic to 162nd, it helps alleviate some of the backup traffic at 148th and Highway 6. 162nd is still within the one-mile jurisdiction of the city. Highway 6 has more available land at 162nd for roundabout, traffic light or turn light lanes. It's a flatter area, better for line of sight for longer vehicles. It'll slow down traffic coming into Waverly, providing safer Waverly. How to pay for this and other city street projects? I think we should take out some bonds, lump all these roads and streets that need to be repaired and done into one project. Get them all together. That would provide more negotiation power for getting viable bids. To pay for these bonds, increase the city sales tax a half a percent. Currently, you're at 7%. You can raise it to seven and a half pretty easily. That'd be 2% for the city. Currently, Beatrice, La Vista, Gretna, Crete, North Platte, Wahoo and York all have 2% rates and do very well. Lincoln has a 7 and 1/4% sales tax currently with 1/4% of that going to streets. I propose to put a vote out for the residents. I believe the residents would vote for an increase in sales tax over a tax levy increase on their property to pay for street repairs. The benefits to get these projects done now, not years from now, it would beautify the city. No more potholes, cracked or broken streets, happier residents. No special assessments, no tax levy increase. Non-residents would be helped paying for our roads. Lincoln currently does this with a 1/4% sales tax and will be voting to extend it soon. I think it would be wise for Waverly to follow Lincoln's example to help pay for our streets to do that.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments tonight on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, thank you very much. Approval of amendments as part of the consent agenda. Consideration of claims and financial reports. I have it in front of me so I can do the move to approve claims, the amount of $161,930 and 7 cents.
Second.
Motion carries three to zero.
Your keynote sales tax reports are added in there for your information only. Introduction of resolutions, we have none. Introduction of ordinances, we have none. And introduction of business and communications, consideration of revised field rental agreement with Waverly Riptide for reduced rental fees for 20...
Why don't we give a motion second to get on the floor before you hear or ask questions of those in the public who may have information?
Do they have a motion?
I'm not sure what I'm supposed to motion.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Hi. Motion authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
I'll second that.
Do we have members of the public that would like to speak on this matter?
Yes, sir.
Will you even sign it?
Hello, my name is Justin Gregory and I am currently the Riptide president for our boys here in Waverly. First off, I'd like to appreciate you having me out tonight to address some of the things that we wanted to talk about. I'm here on behalf of the Waverly Riptide. We're a nonprofit youth baseball organization dedicated exclusively to certain students out of District 145. Our mission has been to keep costs down as well as give the opportunities to our boys and girls here in the Waverly community. However, rising costs and lost revenue have placed a significant strain on our ability to continue offering affordable programs. Okay? That's the big thing that I wanted to kind of chat about tonight. The big things that... I'm going to try and ad lib here. So I know that previously I came out and spoke with the Waverly Parks and Rec and we kind of hashed out a lot of the things that we go through. So I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with that. Each year, we rely on three major fundraisers to help with our entire organization. We have a long ball golf tournament that is usually in October. We have a Riptide Rumble, which is one of the tournaments that we bring here into Waverly. And then we also have a partnership with Crazy Cracker Fireworks, which basically we donate our time and they give us a percentage of their profits. These three fundraisers have historically sustained a lot of the ability for us to do the things that we need to do with in our organization as well as within our community. But with rising costs across the board, it's putting a big dent on what we can do to offer what we offer for our boys as well as give back to our community in the way that we intend to. So to illustrate the severity of our issue, I want to highlight some substantial financial challenges that we now face. One of the most significant losses is the revenue that's related to concessions during our Riptide Rumble. Over the last two years, we have not been able to utilize this as a revenue stream. Previous to that, we brought in approximately $4,000 to $6,000. So that was $4,000 to $6,000 that went right back into the dues, most likely, for the boys that we have. We are trying to do things outside of that right now to kind of build that back up since we don't have the opportunity to utilize Lawson and Wayne Parks to build that. Additionally, our ability to host a successful tournament is at risk as well. Competitive entry fees are essential to attracting teams. If our costs continue to rise, we will lose participation within our tournaments, eliminating yet another revenue stream that we have. Over the past three years, our tournament fees have increased from $550 to $675. If this trend continues, it's inevitably going to price us out of the market for people to come and play here at our tournament. Unlike larger towns, Waverly can't compete on scale alone. Instead, we rely on our well-managed facilities, our community atmosphere, and the ability to attract patrons back into our community. Increasing costs that are associated with a tournament like this jeopardizes all of these advantages. It is imperative to realize that Waverly Riptide is a nonprofit organization. Every penny that we get goes back into our community, whether it be directly associated with our boys or associated with the landmarks within our community. To give you an example, over the past four years, Waverly Riptide has invested more than $90,000 into Waverly Community Foundation fields. We've redone those fields and we have plans with money set aside to basically do a complete infield rework on both of those fields this next year. On top of that, we also contribute to local nonprofit organizations with every fundraiser that we actually do. Last year, we contributed to District 145 Teammates. This year, we're actually doing a Batten for Drew, which is a nonprofit organization out of Elkhorn, supporting a young child with Batten's disease. Beyond the financial investments, we actively engage in community service throughout the years, which such events like a park cleanup days, we do Salvation Army Ring Days, community sandlot baseball during June. This is a call, and I'll tell you this again, if you're available in June on Fridays, come out and play baseball with us. It's fun. And then we also do Riptide Night to support the high school baseball boys. One of the other things that we did in this last couple of years is the boys that are in our high school program, a lot of them actually are former Riptide folks. So when we have an opportunity to support them, whether they're going to districts or whatever playoffs that they're looking at, last year, we had a bunch of Riptide support that kind of pushed them into their buses and saw them out. These are examples of the things we do within our community. However, if we cannot secure sustainable financial path forward, we may be forced to look at more cost-effective ways that may be outside of our community. And that's something that we don't want to consider. We want to keep our money in the Waverly area. One of the examples that I'll give you is the Sand Hills Global League offers an all-inclusive game for 100 bucks a game. That includes covering fields, umpires, lights, scheduling, and maintenance. So literally, we just show up and we play. Comparatively, under our current rates, we would be paying the city approximately $5,000 for tournament field fees. That's approximately 120 games. And think about 120 games and the amount of people that bring into our community. That's not just revenue for Parks and Rec. It's also revenue for our local businesses. And about $4,500 in regular season games, that's approximately 90 games, about 10 home games a season for each team that we have. We have nine teams currently. We recognize that Waverly Parks and Rec is operating at a deficit, but balancing its budget should not come at the expense of our children in our community who simply want to play baseball or softball at a competitive level. To address this issue, the Riptide has proposed a nonprofit discount for organizations holding a 501-3C status. This proposal was made following an unexpected notification of fee increases on January 18th, 2025, after our budgets and invoices had already been set. Our request includes a per-game fee of $30 for non-tournament games and a flat rate of $100 per field per day for tournaments. In return, we have offered a guarantee of a minimum number of games per season on the Waverly Parks and Rec fields and a commitment for hosting our tournament locally on a set number of years if that's applicable. We've also offered our knowledge and our experience in helping other teams within our community organize tournaments on your fields as well. This proposal is not only reasonable, but it provides a framework for budget planning within the Waverly Parks and Rec environment. We urge you as an organization to give this request a serious consideration that it deserves. Your decision will directly impact the families and children within District 145. By approving this proposal, you're making a critical investment in our community's future and ensuring that every child has the access of affordable baseball programs. That's the big things that I wanted to kind of make sure that everyone knew prior to moving forward. One other note that I want to make is we did start these communications in 2024. We actually sent a proposal on 4/19/2024 with no response until 7/16/2024. At that time, we didn't even know that any prices were going to be increased until we got an email on the 18th of January this year. So that's the down and dirty. It probably wasn't too dirty, but that's the basics of what I wanted to kind of get at.
Just for clarity and for the council, so the agreement that's before the council, are you in favor or do you have concerns with some of its terms as far as what you will be charged?
From what was presented to me after I left the Parks and Rec meeting, I was in agreement and I brought it to our board and we were in agreement with the $30 per game for a non-tournament and $100 per day per field for tournament play.
Which is what is in there?
Yes.
Your support, what's...
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't...
No, that's good.
How long's an average game for Riptide?
Depends upon what the age is. It's either an hour and 40 minutes or an hour and 50 minutes. Sometimes it's two hours if it is a championship game.
So you're looking at a difference of, give or take, it would be 50 hours, not $50?
Yes, sir.
Plus the $10, like be for $60, and then this revision would take it down to 30?
Yes. Would you like to know why that number came up the way it did?
Sure.
So umpire fees for one umpire is $65. 65 plus 30 is 95, and that was actually not... That was what was proposed to me by the Parks and Rec Board to try and match the $100 per game that the Sand Hills Global was actually proposing.
And then on tournament days, approximately, how many games do you estimate are on a tournament day?
Per field?
Per field, you're probably looking at six games probably per field.
How many fields are you running?
Five to seven, maybe eight, depending upon how many sign up. This is all dependent upon, obviously, people signing up and coming to our turn.
How many teams do you normally have come to your turn on?
Usually, it's eight per division. This year, it's a little bit different because we have two teams that are in the same division that are from Waverly. So if you calculate that, 80 teams minus our teams. So that's just an approximate number.
How many do you have signed up now?
We have... We are four short of maximum capacity. So 70 some odd, 75, 76, somewhere around there.
And that's for both weekends?
That's for both weekends, yes.
Each weekend is going to have about 76-ish teams, or that's between the two weekends?
That's between the two weekends. Yes, ma'am.
This one might be hard to answer, but...
Talk about best.
How many spectators would you have for a game, for a game?
Okay, a game, let's... I would say at a low, you're looking at two people per child, and we average probably, let's call it 12 kids per team. So it's 24 kids times two, that's 48. That's probably the minimum.
50-ish?
Yep. It's a guesstimate.
Sure. And how much do you charge for admission to any of these games?
Zero.
Okay.
And that is... That's due to USSA rules. So we run all of our tournaments under USSA and we have an opportunity to do one of two things. We can either charge a flat rate fee where you pay X amount of dollars and you come in, you don't have a gate fee. If you charge gate fee, there's a percentage of those gate fees that go back to USSA, which usually is more work and more costly. So instead of doing that, from a gate fee perspective, we just say, let's do a flat rate, so we know what is going back to USSA and what's coming back to us at the end.
And what's your flat rate right now for family?
It's for a team. A flat rate for a team right now is 675.
Any other questions?
How does your tournament fee compare with the other ones that you guys go to?
If we're out of state, usually it's a lower, but there's a gate fee that's associated, which is the situation I talked about a little bit earlier. If you're going to a major scenario, when I say major, I mean like in an Omaha or a Lincoln area, you're probably looking at $700 to $800.
And I'm trying to, okay, so I'm trying to do the math, maybe someone already has it, on the tournaments. You said there's six games going concurrently?
There's potentially six games per field, depending upon how many fields we go. So let's say this year, we do all five fields. And actually, one weekend, we're doing all five fields, even Lawson won.
Thirty games at once.
So on one day, if you're looking at that, yes. We usually start at 8 o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Or for day one. Day two, day two would be your...
Half that.
Well, not even that. You're probably looking at 25. I think there's one less per division on the second day because it's an elimination day. I think we average 65 when it's eight across the board with four divisions. So 65 games with four divisions, maxed to eight teams per division. Does that make sense? Yep.
What was our previous price on the fields? Because this in black is what we proposed for this coming year. What was the fees for last year?
Last year, I want to say it was $35 per game.
And then what was it on the tournament days?
$35 per game, I think.
$35 per game.
If I'm doing the math right, the game fee is roughly, you're asking for around 30. Right now, it would be around 50 for the random game fee.
Correct.
The tournament fee seems much different. You guys are looking for $100 per field per day, so 600?
You didn't have a tournament fee before, right?
We didn't. We did not. The tournament fee would be on a per-game basis. So you guys are asking for approximately $600 a day. Because $100 per field per day, six games, or six fields going on, so 600.
But within your... Are you calculating also the one game free per field?
I have not. But your request is $100 per field per day and you're expecting six fields per day. So you're requesting approximately $600.
If... I'm not a math genius, but if your math is right, I'm going to trust you.
And we were looking at, so 25 hours per one game per field. So we were looking at $50 an hour, or $50 a game, times six is 300.
Minus 50, because you give us a free game. So 250 per field if we run six games from eight to eight.
250 times six, though.
Yes.
1500.
Yeah, that's on break. 1500 to 600. Difference. Okay.
We're going to charge $900 for one.
And what was... What would have the price have been last year? Like, how big of a difference are we talking about from last year?
I don't know what that price was. I wasn't present at the time.
What if, do you know what it was like? It's okay.
I don't have it with me right now.
That's okay. Sorry. I'm just curious how big of a jump we're making on these price changes.
Well, based upon our budgets and stuff like that, we stuck to our budgets, what we had agreed to the previous contract.
You don't remember what that is off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head. No, I could probably pull it up if you want me to do that.
If I remember right, it was only... If I remember right, Park and Rec's department looked at, they were doing the increases per hour. And so I think it was something, but I don't remember if it was five or 10. I don't remember.
Parks and Rec Committee considered this?
Yes.
And recommended approval?
Recommended approval of this.
Park and Rec Committee came up, number one, with the initial prices that were presented to them. And they're, yes. So the Park and Rec Committee recommended the initial prices that are in black, and that was approved by Parks and Rec and then later by the council. And then when they received their fees is when they came back to us and were like, can we propose something different? So, and then the Park and Rec Committee considered the different fees. You were at that meeting.
And is recommending acceptance of those?
Acceptance of that.
Yes, the ones in red.
And to address, I think one of the questions that you had last on was, or during the meeting I was in about at, was like, you had a comment on making sure that communication was done in a timely manner.
Yes.
And that was definitely something that I brought up during the Parks and Rec meeting. And I requested a 1231 spot because we try to get everything done as early as possible so that we can start planning for our season. And stereotypically, we get our budgets in by November 1st, so we have the holiday, a season to try and iron out anything. And then by the first of the year is when we finalize budgets, create our invoices, send our invoices out for them to be paid by all the folks that have dues. And I think the big thing that we're struggling with just for this year more than anything is our budgets and whatnot were already sent out post us getting a new prize award.
Yeah, no, I agree with you there. And in fact, when we, as we start looking at the Park and Rec supervisor, I definitely would, I'd love to see a fee schedule built into the public to be a budget process, actually. Because I think that would give you guys plenty of time if our budget process is in the middle of summer, what we're proposing for the next year.
October 1st, effective day of fiscal year, so you would know by October 1st.
Okay, perfect. Okay, perfect.
But realistically, you probably even know a little bit earlier than that, as they were looking at the fee schedule. That's just when it's finally adopted. So, I, I would definitely suggest moving the timeline that way. Any other questions? Our speaker.
I don't have, I don't have any questions for you guys, but if you do have some for me, please interrupt me. The big thing is that I want to make sure, and I, I mean this sincerely, like, the better that we, as a Riptide organization, understand what your goals are from a city council and from a Parks and Rec scenario, the better we can assist with those goals. And that was one of the things that I talked to the Parks and Rec about, what the goals are. And that was where a lot of the, hey, we're running in the red year over year type of scenario, that conversation came into place. Which is where, you know, we aren't looking to keep you in the red by any means, we're looking for something that would be fair enough for an organization such as us, that is a nonprofit, to be able to continue running like we run, but also help in regards to any goals that you guys may have as well. So, help us to understand those things so that we can help.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else that wants to speak on this topic? Do you have a list of Waverly-based, what we consider Waverly-based teams, or not even a list, but the number of Waverly, quote unquote, Waverly-based teams?
To Parks and Rec, yes.
Yeah. We are at slight disadvantage on that information coming to us immediately.
Are you looking for just baseball and softball related?
Just baseball.
So, as far as I know, that are outside of what you guys manage, I think there are three. The Waverly, or Waverly Riptide, Wave Softball, and Waverly Heat is a nonprofit, which is why I proposed the nonprofit discount across the board, rather than just a Waverly-Riptide scenario. We're not looking to just benefit ourselves in this scenario.
So we think three total, what we would consider Waverly-based based teams?
But the differences, I want to make sure that we know this, the differences between those teams and ours is they don't just have a District 145 limitation. We just have a District 145 limitation. So if we have enough kids that try out for our team, those kids make the team. We don't go out and look for talent that's outside of District 145.
How many kids do you have outside of District 145 on the teams?
Right now?
Yeah.
Not, none, none that I know of.
None?
Yep, we had to cut people that tried out for the team that didn't make the top twelve, so. I've talked a lot, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, it's just three very couple, I appreciate it.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions for the speaker? And I'll ask you guys if there's anyone else that wants to speak on this topic. Okay, so, the topic at hand is whether or not we adjust our fees for Waverly-Riptide. So if I'm doing the math right, they're asking to drop down from thirty, twenty-five an hour and ten dollars an hour for lights, down to a base of thirty per game, which would be the difference of about fifty dollars, well, let's see, twenty-five and ten, would actually be about sixty, seventy dollars, right? So if we're thinking about two-hour games, it's fifty dollars for the game plus twenty dollars for the light, so seventy dollars a game down to thirty, give or take. And then the tournament schedule would move about fifteen hundred dollars is what we have scheduled in there, they're requesting it drop down to about six hundred dollars per day for that tournament. It's a two-day tournament, it wouldn't quite be three thousand and twelve hundred, but it would be somewhere, somewhere in that vicinity, but fifteen hundred and six hundred is fair for the first day at least. So my big concern there is we're making an exception for one out of three Waverly-based teams, is my first concern. And we're really making that determination because they asked. Not because we want to do it, not because we came up with that idea on our own, but because one specific team asked for a discount, because we go specifically for that team for that discount. A lot of good points made about what makes this team unique compared to the other two, but I still have the concern about making a more than half discount on tournaments and more than half discount per game for one of the three Waverly-based teams. The other concern I would have is a broader concern in that we are in the red constantly with Parks and Recs. One of the reasons, I was on the Park and Recs committee when the, the original fee structure was, was set, and the discussion at that, at that time, was completely based on how do we try to recoup some of the money that we're putting into the baseball program and to the Parks and Recs department? The discussion at that time was actually that the increase that we were making was very minimal. And that's why we built in the quote-unquote home team discount for the three Waverly-based teams, was to try to make it a little bit less of a burden on those folks on what was originally based, while also trying to make up a little bit of that gap. That right now, Stephanie, we're mostly making that gap up in Keno sales, correct? So Keno is funding our Parks and Recs. We're not going to get to a point anytime soon where our programs are going to fund Parks and Recs. We have far more Parks and Recs projects and facilities and programs and maintenance. But I do have a concern about not increasing it at least some on an annual basis to try to keep up with maintenance, so. That would be my kind of two cents on it. What about you guys?
I agree with you, and I know when Justin presented to Parks and Rec, he wanted this for all of the nonprofits teams in Waverly, but I feel like...
Two.
I'm sorry?
Which would end up being two out of three?
Yeah. I feel like it's not, it wouldn't be great just to give the boys a discount and not the girls a discount. I think that's something that we definitely have to take into consideration. And then, you know, I'm also worried about our budget, what we need to make versus what they need to make. So, I think...
It sounds to me like, since we were so late getting this to them, we should do something, maybe.
I believe there...
They said there...
My understanding was that there was an open Parks and Rec meeting where this was discussed, is that correct?
Yes.
And, like, to the public last year, the change?
Yes, but I would say that that was November at the best. I, I don't have my notes in front of me, it was November at the very most recent, it was likely a December meeting, I would guess. Do you remember when that meeting may have been?
Me?
Yeah, yeah, if you remember.
No, I, actually, when you spoke about it, the, during the last meeting, is the first time that I heard about it, but...
Okay.
Like, like, this is my first year in this position, so...
It was definitely like a November, December meeting, it was definitely not like a...
Earlier than that.
August meeting, that's for sure, yeah, yeah, yeah. And not that it matters a, a ton, but I did reach out to Aaron, because he's not here today, just to get his feel for it, he did send me and said that I could share publicly that his generic feeling before coming into the meeting was that he was concerned about an exception for one team or club, and was leaning towards leaving the rates, same for everyone. That was his, one of his big concerns.
Do the girls host any tournaments?
Not that I know of. Scott's my treasurer, he, he's on the board with ours, so, there you go.
I thought that they had one, but I, I could be very wrong.
Okay.
I, I'm not certain on that.
Dave, what do you think about the one you were battling in between someplace?
I'm not. My feel right now is to leave it as it is, as it was, as it originally came through with Parks and Recs.
Up and, up and rising.
Yeah, and I know that it's going to put a, a crimp and a strain on the nonprofits, but it sounds like there are ways...
Just so, and I should have spoken up earlier, there's actually case law in Nebraska that we can't differentiate between nonprofits and for-profits. Case in point, City Eagle used to give a different rate for firework stands that were manned or staffed by nonprofits versus those that were for-profit that were struck down by a court. So, if you want to say Waverly-based, I think that's okay, but we can't distinguish between for-profit and nonprofit.
What about one particular versus any other of like kind?
You could, if there's a base, a rational basis for that distinction.
And the only basis that we typically would have here would be nonprofit, and they're not unique at a nonprofit, anyways. So really, in this case, we may be in trouble making an exception specifically for Riptide if we don't make an exception for the other two Waverly-based.
Correct. But you could make an exception for the three Waverly-based teams that you're aware of.
And if we made an exception for the three Waverly-based teams, we are, I'm assuming their, their load is similar?
I doubt, softball doesn't play as many games.
And they don't, they don't have, if they have tournaments, they're not as extensive as their tournaments, if they haven't been done.
When I talked to Trevor Haskin Camp, which is one of the Heat softball coaches, and he said that the only thing that he does here in Waverly in regards to the field is practice. That's some information that...
Practice.
How many teams does Heat have, do you know?
He, does he coach?
Does Heat have, just one team?
They, I mean, they started eight, you know, I don't know...
Oh, that's right, okay.
Yeah, my daughter played all the Lincoln leagues, and no, Waverly Heat has people, you know, it's got eight, yeah, it just goes all the way.
All the way until like eighteen, I think so, so...
If I'm reading this right, we're not charging a practice fee for any Waverly-based teams.
That's correct, that's my understanding.
It's just games and then the tournament fee.
And then, based upon the conversation I had with Shannon as well, the ten dollar light fee is only for out-of-town folks?
So the motion on the floor...
Okay, thank you, yes.
Is if you vote yes, you'll approve these changes in red. It's by my understanding...
The law on the...
Correct, and, but if there's a no vote, by one of the three of you, because it's going to require all three of you this evening with the reduced numbers, then that would, then revert back to the existing agreement, which has already been approved, so it would require no further action by the council, so everything would be as is except for red. Right?
Did we ever actually approve the rates as proposed? I don't know that we did.
Not since I've been on.
Megan, do you remember if we had a council agenda item on this?
I don't, but I can...
I believe before it ever even came to approve, I believe it came as an amended, like with the amendment.
Improve the field rental rates? If I go searching, it's going to be a moment.
I just don't want to slow down Park, whichever way we end up going, I don't want to necessarily slow down Park and Rec if we haven't officially adopted any rates, is what I mean. I'm not sure that we have, that we've officially adopted any rates for the twenty-five, twenty-six season, or for the twenty-five season.
And then what does that mean?
We'd have, I think we have to do that at some point.
Well, what you could do here is someone could move to amend, to strike the red on this, that if that amendment passes, they could vote to approve this as is, and so that would be those rates except for red, correct?
So, we didn't...
If you didn't, I mean, regardless of whether you did or not.
December tenth, it looks like, we did.
Do we, do we?
It was approved.
So we have approved the rates as they are in black, so.
Yeah.
So today, we can only approve this for Riptide? What is on the red?
No, we could...
You could amend it, say all three Waverly teams, if that was your desire.
We, we approved it on December tenth?
I'm just double checking here.
So that was before?
No, that sounds, like I said, that...
I mean, that was before their January first, they're talking about.
Yeah, but the Parks and Recs meeting, like I said, was November, December, I can't remember the exact date, but it was just in that timeframe when they set these rates. So, if we approved it December tenth, that, that makes sense that we would have.
Yes, we did, yep.
So what we're doing today is either, a vote of no would be, we're leaving the rates completely the same for everybody as we already adopted in December, or amending it in some way, shape, or form, or a vote for yes would be to amend it exactly as the bracket showed.
Got it, okay.
Which lowers it.
Which would lower it specifically as the bracket showed. But we could make changes to that as well. I don't have any changes that I would want made.
I feel, I kind of feel like this was already voted on and approved by Parks and Rec and the city council prior to this year, and now that we are going to have a new city, or sorry, a new Parks and Rec director, maybe this is something that we can readdress for the next season with better communication with all of the Waverly teams.
Do a better budget.
Moving forward, yeah, like, especially if we are going to make that consideration of like, let's get this done sooner, then this is definitely like a good step adding on the new Parks and Rec director, you know, hopefully shortly, to have this discussion like moving forward, but I feel like this decision was previously made, we could consider it for the next year with better discussion and open communication, is kind of...
So we would as is the way it is now?
I mean, I don't know, I just think, yeah, I mean, unfortunately, that way we can get in better communication, figure out our numbers, have the new Parks and Rec director involved in the decision, you know, this decision was made back in December, here we are now, end of March, trying to amend something that was already set, set in motion. I don't know, what do you think?
So, dear. Any other discussion?
So vote no is the agreement that is.
Correct.
Right, if you would vote no, you, please, that removes any of the red.
Call for a vote?
Motion failed, zero three.
Next up is committee reports, nothing personal.
No, I can take it personal.
Sorry, guys.
Let's start with Human Services, Park and Rec.
Nothing to update on?
Old Works is next with Aaron, he is absent, do you have anything from Public Works?
Oh.
This six-page PowerPoint, no.
I did have something from Public Works, Megan, Megan set it up here. They've been flushing fire hydrants, jetting sewer mains, cleaned out the Mansfield ditch over by 136th Street, swept the streets before the second blizzard, have more cleanup to do from that blizzard, mainly small tree debris that they'll be cleaning up, picked up some large branches right afterwards. We lost power at the wastewater treatment plant for sixteen hours due to one of the power poles snapping, and we had a power loss out by the, some of the wellfields, so we were running on four wells for a day. And, they're working on the Danvers Street water main project, they've made the first hole, the first core through that group of houses, so we're about a third of the way on, on Danvers Street, and we'll start on the Oak Lane project in the coming weeks, be televising for sewer laterals here this next week.
Okay. I had about four hours on sewer plants, so, four hours extra, so on that, on that power supply. So kudos, by the way, to LES, because that was pretty extensive damage, that's pretty impressive, but they got it on as quickly as they did.
They did, they did a great job.
I think we were sitting at around eight hundred folks in Waverly at one point without power, so, pretty impressive that we got it, most of us hooked back for one day.
Yeah, it was.
Next up is Public Health, but I don't have any updates. Economic Development, Dave?
Nothing to report.
And City Administrator?
I just would like to say thank you to our former Parks and Rec director, Shayna Merle, she did give notice and she worked out her two weeks, and so her last day was last Wednesday. We've been doing interviews and have made an offer to a, an individual, and so we are working on the background check on that person right now, so we hope to have that back soon and have a Park and Rec director in place with, before the next council meeting, at least have accepted a job and, and be waiting for them to give notice if theirs. And I will remind, just a general reminder, we do have three hundred and sixty-five days a year water conservation measures in place, people will be turning on their spring People will be turning on their sprinkler systems here in coming, coming days and weeks, or half already. So please be mindful of what days are your watering days and what hours. So, and if there's any questions, take a look at the website, and that's all spelled out on the website for you.
Appreciate it.
I'm listening, Sharon.
Fair enough. Call for a vote.
Motion carried, three to zero.
Very good, Sharon. Six fifty.